Call to order, council. City Council Meeting, City of Forest Park. Council Meeting Number 1268, March 21st, 2016. Let us stand for the pledge, please. (Clerk) Burns, here.
Collins, here.
Cottle, here.
Herbie, here.
Holt, here.
Johnson.
It's over there already. Yes, here.
Southall.
Here.
All members of the President and County for us will move to the second item, minutes.
You all received copies of the minutes in your packets. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, the minutes will stand approved as presented. Item number three, presentations. Mr. Graham at the business of the month.
Mayor, members of council, thank you very much. Over the past several months, we've highlighted companies, a number of new businesses, companies that are new to the area, moved here from somewhere else. Tonight, we wanted to call attention to one of our existing companies, a business that has a solid track record of success and a well-earned reputation for tremendous customer service. Indeed, Agogo Event and Party Rentals has been one of our fastest-growing companies and a pillar of our Northland business community for several years. Whether it's a corporate, graduation, or wedding event, the professionals at Agogo bring your vision to life. They offer exceptional customer service and a variety of party rental, wedding, and event products to customers throughout greater Cincinnati, Dayton, and northern Kentucky. Their extensive inventory includes everything needed to put on a first-class event, including party tents, canopies, tables, chairs, linens, and much more. Yes, they can fill all of your event and party rental needs. If it's your first time arranging an event of this type, and I can tell you from personal experience, it can be rather nerve-wracking, you may not know where to really start in terms of planning this event. That's why the Agogo have compiled some useful information to get you started. Just visit their handy website and follow their easy-to-understand guidelines. Even better, you can contact one of their event professionals, and they'll walk you through the entire planning process. Whether you're looking for the perfect tent rental package or wedding layout guide, or you simply have event-related questions, their team can help you, and it's all easy to learn. To learn more, simply call 520-6259 or visit their website at agogorentals.com. Unfortunately, owner Chad Gilbert cannot join us tonight. I believe he's working an event, so I will make sure that he receives the award and will congratulate Chad and his team. This is a company that was brought to our attention actually by our fire chief, Alfie Jones, and we've started working with them. They've been having such a great, successful track record, we want to make sure that they can continue to grow here in Forest Park, so we'll make sure that they get the award.
Thank you very much, Paul. The next item on the agenda would be a motion. Councilwoman Herbie.
Yes, I would move to amend the agenda and take up at this time, item G, under new business, a motion to appoint a candidate to the beautification commission.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that we amend the agenda and take up at this time, item G, under new business, which would be a motion to appoint a candidate to the beautification commission. Is there any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll on the motion to amend the agenda?
Burns?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Cottle?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Southall?
Yes.
Motion to amend the agenda passes seven-zero. We then would look at item G. Is there a motion, Councilwoman Holt?
I would like to make a motion to appoint Ms. Lois Chambers to the beautification commission for a term expiring 11/30/17.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we appoint Ms. Lois Chambers to the beautification commission for a term expiring 11/30/17. Is there any discussion?
Just say thank you for joining the committee, and if you have any friends that are looking to serve the community, let us know. Thank you.
Okay, so at this time, Mr. Burns, if you would, for me, please, and Ms. Chambers, if you would.
We got to vote on the motion.
I'm sorry. All those in favor of the motion, let it be known by the sign of voting, aye.
Aye.
And aye opposed. The motion carries unanimously. Mr. Burns, if you would, for me, and Ms. Chambers, if you would come forward, please.
We need you to raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Lois Chambers.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
Constitution of the State of Ohio.
The Charter of the Municipality of Forest Park, Ohio.
The Charter of the Municipality of the Forest Park, Ohio.
And that I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Honestly.
Honestly.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge the duties as.
Discharge the duties as.
A member of the beautification committee.
A member of the beautification committee.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And this is for you. Is there a pen? If you'd like to say anything.
I have been a resident of Forest Park over 40 years, and I have never been on a committee, and I love flowers and everything, and so I consider this as a great opportunity for me, and I just want to say thank you.
Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is item number four, communications from the public. This is a time for citizens to comment on matters before council or to ask questions of concern to them. When recognized, please come forward to the podium, give your name and address, and then state your comments or questions. Council meetings are taped and recorded for ease of transcription. Comments are limited to five minutes. Is there anyone from the public who would like to make a comment or to address council at this time? Ms. Chambers, you're perfectly willing to, you're perfectly welcome to stay for the meeting if you'd like, but if you have things to do elsewhere, you can feel free to leave. That's the choice that's absolutely yours. We will move then to item number five, reports of standing committees. The first listed standing committee will be Public Safety Committee, Councilwoman Cottle.
Yes, with the fire department, I'm working with Jermaine Hill on We Thrive, and he's actually at the Wintonwood City School Building tonight to inform the school board of the We Thrive program and engage and encourage someone from the school board to join our committee, and also we encourage all residents to be a part of the We Thrive committee, and you can contact Jermaine Hill at the fire department regarding that. Also, there's been grants for equipment and vehicles obtained, and that's been beneficial for the fire department, and I have no report for the police department at this time. Thank you.
Are there any questions for Councilwoman Cottle? Hearing none, Councilwoman Cottle, for the work session on the 28th, I have two items for public safety, CPB reappointments, and the fire department arbitration report. Do you have any to add?
No, thanks.
Thank you. The next committee report, item B, Ways and Means Committee, Councilwoman Herbie.
I have no report tonight.
Any questions for Councilwoman Herbie? Hearing none, Councilwoman Herbie, I have no items on the agenda listed for you for the work session on the 28th. Do you have any to add?
No, not for next work session.
Thank you. Item C, under fires, Community Development Committee, Mr. Burns.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have no report for the community development. However, would like to thank all the council members who did attend the meeting with the school board in my absence. I understand it was a good meeting, and Mr. Hill was able to actually talk about the We Thrive program amongst other items, so thank you for that. That would conclude my report.
Any questions for Mr. Burns? Hearing none, Mr. Burns, I have no items on the agenda for you. Do you have any to add for the work session?
No, I do not.
Thank you. Item D is the Law Committee, Councilwoman Collins.
I have no report from the Law Committee, however, I would like to state that on March 9th, 2016, I attended the council on aging. It was a two-day seminar, but I attended on the 9th, and it was very well-attended, extremely informative of, there was lots of information regarding our elderly community, region-wide and even statewide. The speakers were outstanding. It was just a very effective two-day seminar, and I just wanted to inform the city of that.
Any questions for Councilwoman Collins? Hearing none, Councilwoman Collins, I have no items on the agenda for you for the work session. Do you have any to add?
No.
Next committee report is Human Resources Committee, Councilwoman Holt.
I do not have a report tonight, thank you.
Any questions for Councilwoman Holt? Hearing none, Councilwoman Holt, I have no items on the agenda for you for the work session. Do you have any to add?
No.
Next committee report is Human Resources Committee, Councilwoman Holt.
I do not have a report tonight, thank you.
Any questions for Councilwoman Holt? Hearing none, Councilwoman Holt, I have no items on the agenda for you for the work session. Do you have any to add?
No, I do not.
Next item for report on standing committees is Public Improvement and Facilities, Councilwoman Southall.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and ladies and gentlemen. I do not have a report for Public Improvement and Facilities Committee, but I do, under safety, I do have two things that I'd like to acknowledge. This week of March 20th through the 26th, there are two important items I think the public should be, the citizens should be aware of. One is the poison prevention, which is scheduled during this period, is more than 2 million poisons are reported to the poison control center across the country, and more than 90% of these poisonings occur in a home. The majority of non-fatal poisonings occur in children younger than six years old, and poisoning are the leading causes of death among adults. The U.S. Congress established a National Poison Prevention Week, which started on September 16th, 1961, but shortly thereafter, the Poison Prevention Week council was organized to coordinate this annual event and promote poisoning prevention. We urge you to use this week to make sure that your home is poison-proof and to learn more about keeping your family safe from poison, but remember, poison prevention is not delegated to just one week, but it's something that you, we should be aware of throughout the year in particular. The second thing I'd like to talk about is the, this particular week of 26th of March is the Severe Weather Awareness Week, it's called, and what this is about is that the month, this is a period where there are many tornadoes that would occur during the season, so there would be a statewide tornado drill on March 23rd at 9:50 a.m., so I think that's very important for us to be aware of that. That concludes my report under safety. Mr. Mayor, any questions, if there be any?
Any questions for Councilman Southall? Hearing none, Councilman Southall, I have one item on the agenda for you for the work session, which is the Right Farm Coordinator Restoration. Do you have any others to add?
Not at this time, sir.
Next item on the agenda would be Intergovernmental Relations and Communications Commission. That's my committee. I have no report, but I'll be happy to answer any questions if there are any. We've moved into item number six. First item under, item number six is the mayor's report. I would just like to report that I attended the joint school board council meeting last Thursday, and sitting in for Vice Mayor Burns, who could not be present, as he stated, it was, I thought, a very informative meeting, though it was short. A lot of good information was exchanged, and the next meeting date for that joint committee would be the third Thursday in April, which would be April 21st, and that meeting will be at the school board office. Also, on Saturday, I attended the breakfast with the Easter Bunny event that was held at Frish's, as one of the major programs for Parks and Recreation Commission. It was exceedingly well-attended, and I thought it was very well-done. I would like to thank all of those people on Parks and Rec and other staff members who made that event possible, as well as the parents, grandparents, guardians, and the children who attended, the council members and the staff who attended as well. That would conclude my report. I'd answer any questions if there are any. Hearing none, item seven, the city manager's report, Mr. Hodges.
Thank you. I'll only report that the departmental reports have all been completed, included in the council packet, and made available to the public with the clerk of council. So that would conclude my report, but I would respond any questions if there are any.
Any questions for the city manager? Hearing none, thank you, Mr. Hodges. Move to item number eight of the reports, first of those being the law director, Mr. Waikau.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have nothing specific to report on tonight, but if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions for the law director? Hearing none, thank you, sir. The next report will be clerk of council, Mrs. Huffman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to report that Resolution Number 08-2016 was posted as required, and that concludes my report.
Any questions for clerk of council? Hearing none, thank you, Ms. Huffman. We will move now to item number nine, unfinished bids and general orders. Is there a motion, Councilwoman Herbie?
Yes, I would move to suspend the rules requiring the reading in full on two separate days and read for the second time by title only, ordinance is number, ordinance number 04-2016.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that we suspend the rules requiring the reading in full on two separate occasions and read for the second time by title only, ordinance number 04-2016. Is there a discussion?
Just that this was posted as required, and it was also read for the first time by title only on March 7th.
Any further discussions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion to suspend, I'm sorry, would the clerk please call the roll?
Collins?
Here. Yes.
Cottle?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Southall?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
The motion to suspend passes seven-zero. This brings us to ordinance, item A, under Article IX, ordinance number 04-2016. Would the clerk please read this ordinance by title only?
Ordinance number 04-2016, amending Chapter 95, Fire Prevention Code of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Forest Park, Ohio.
Is there a motion?
Yes.
I would move to adopt chapter, amending Chapter 95, Fire Prevention Code of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Forest Park, Ohio.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance number 04-2016. Is there a discussion, Councilwoman Cottle?
Yes, in an effort to maintain consistency in the formatting of our codes, our publishing company advised that we needed to add a definition or better define what is required as it relates to Type A and B family daycare facilities and group homes inspection and licensing. Therefore, this code amendment is provided. Council, whether this proposed ordinance for the first time on March 7th is now scheduled for the second reading and formal vote this evening.
Any further discussions? Hearing none, would the clerk please call the roll on ordinance 04-2016?
Cottle?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Southall?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Ordinance number 04-2016 passes seven-zero. Next item on the agenda is item 10, new business. Is there a motion, Councilwoman Herbie?
Yes, I would move to suspend the rules requiring the reading in full on two separate days and read for the first time by title only, ordinances number 05-2016 through ordinance number 07-2016.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that we suspend the rules requiring the reading in full on two separate occasions and read for the first time by title only, ordinances number 05-2016 through ordinance 07-2016. Is there a discussion?
No, just that these were posted as required.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, would the clerk please call the roll on the motion to suspend?
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Southall?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Cottle?
Yes.
Motion to suspend passes seven-zero. Item A, under new business, ordinance number 05-2016. Would the clerk please read this ordinance by title only?
Ordinance number 05-2016, and ordinance amending Chapter 150, land use, to provide additional regulations for bars and restaurants.
This ordinance will be on the agenda for a vote on the meeting, the next regularly scout council meeting. Next item on the agenda is item B, ordinance number 06-2016. Would the clerk please read this ordinance by title only?
Ordinance number 06-2016, ordinance authorizing the City of Forest Park, Ohio, to enter into a payment schedule to a lease purchase agreement by and between PNC Equipment Finance and the City of Forest Park, Ohio, to finance the purchase of equipment for the City of Forest Park and authorizing other documents in connection therewith and declaring an emergency.
Is there a motion? Councilwoman Herbie?
Yes, I would move adoption of ordinance number 06-2016.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance 06-2016. Is there a discussion, Councilwoman Herbie?
Yes, as we talked about in the previous work sessions, there's a plan to acquire a number of items through a lease arrangement, and this plan is for the acquisition of radios for the police and fire departments, a police cruiser, a fire truck, and computer server. Our timing allows us to take advantage of an opportunity to save taxpayer money on this acquisition because Motorola, who's the vendor of the radios, is offering the city a 25% saving on the radios if ordered by March 23rd, and that's also the reason for this being declared an emergency. This represents a savings to the city in excess of $75,000. The breakdown of this is police, for the police department, there are police radios with an expenditure of up to $111,000, marked police car up to $39,000. Fire, in the fire department, fire radios up to $196,500. A fire station alert system up to $17,500, and a ladder truck up to $9,000, $900,000. I wish it were $9,000. Information technology and new house storage server up to $36,000 for a total cost of $1.3 million. And this is the first of three ordinances, and this will cover everything except the fire truck because it's considerably more expensive, and it's on a five-year lease instead of a three-year lease, so I would urge adoption of this ordinance.
Any further discussions? Hearing none, would the clerk please call the roll on ordinance number 06-2016?
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Southall?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Cottle?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Ordinance 06-2016 passes seven-zero. Next item on the agenda, ordinance, next item on the agenda is item C, ordinance number 07-2016. The clerk please read this ordinance by title only.
Ordinance number 07-2016, ordinance authorizing the City of Forest Park, Ohio, to enter into a lease purchase agreement and payment schedule by and between PNC Equipment Finance and the City of Forest Park, Ohio, to finance the purchase of a fire truck for the City of Forest Park and authorizing other documents in connection therewith and declaring an emergency.
Is there a motion, Councilwoman Herbie?
Yes, I would move adoption of ordinance number 07-2016.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt our ordinance 07-2016. Is there a discussion, Councilwoman Herbie?
Just as the, as the reading of the title indicates, this is for the purchase, or the lease purchase, lease, excuse me, lease of the fire truck, which is a five-year lease instead of three years.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, would the clerk please call the roll on ordinance 07-2016?
Johnson?
Yes.
Southall?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Cottle?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Ordinance 07-2016 passes seven-zero. Next item on the agenda, motion, Mr. Burns?
I move to suspend the rules requiring the reading in full and read by title only, Resolutions Number 9-2016 through 11-2016. These resolutions were posted six days prior to this meeting.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we suspend the rules requiring the reading in full and read on, by title only, Resolutions Numbers 09-2016 and 11-2016. Is there a discussion? Hearing none, would the clerk please call the motion, call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules?
Southall?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Cottle?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes. The motion to suspend the rules passes seven-zero. First, next item on the agenda is item D, Resolution 09-2016. Would the clerk please read that resolution by title only?
Resolution number 09-2016, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Motorola Solutions, Inc., and Mobile Comm. for the purchase of public safety radios and public safety equipment through the State of Ohio bidding process.
Is there a motion, Councilwoman Herbie?
Yes, I would move adoption of Resolution Number 09-2016.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 09-2016. Is there a discussion, Councilwoman Herbie?
Yes, this is a part also of the lease arrangement, and particularly, this is to purchase certain items off the state bid list and therefore waive formal bidding procedures since the state's already completed the process. The resolution that you have before you is for the radio upgrades for the police and fire departments, and again, we're under a time constraint on this because Motorola is giving us that discount, so I would urge adoption of this resolution.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, would the clerk please call the roll on Resolution 09-2016?
Burns?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Cottle?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Southall?
Yes.
Resolution 09-2016 passes seven-zero.
Next item on the agenda is item E, Resolution Number 0, Resolution 10-2016. Would the clerk please read that resolution by title only?
Resolution Number 10-2016, accepting the bid of Atleta, Inc., for the 2016 street program.
Is there a motion, Mr. Southall?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Off a motion at Resolution Number 10, 2016, we receive for adoption, sir.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 10-2016.
Is there any discussion, Mr. Southall?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Under this resolution, a total of three sealed bids were received and open for our 2016 street program that will be primarily, consist of curb, catch basin, and semi-asphalt overlays to streets of Converse, Brunswick, Chapel, Chappelle, there it is, thank you, and Stapleton as our base bid. In addition, we will be doing some work at the intersections of Winton and Waycross, alternate to, parentheses, as well as some of the spot curb repairs, city wides. This work is a residential street repair that restores the street for 15 years or longer. Staff is recommending that the estimate of $6,632,862.19 be awarded to Adelaide Incorporated for this program. Adelaide Incorporated has done this type of work for the city for the past, in the past, and recently as 2014. as two thousand and fourteen and two thousand and fifteen. So I urge adoption of Resolution Ten, two thousand and sixteen.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Would the clerk please call the roll on Resolution Ten, two thousand sixteen?
Collins?
Yes.
Cottle?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Southall?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Resolution Ten dash two thousand sixteen passes seven zero. Next item on the agenda for, is Resolution Number Eleven, two thousand sixteen. Would the clerk please read that resolution by title only?
Resolution Number Eleven dash two thousand sixteen, a resolution authorizing the disposal of surplus confiscated and obsolete property.
Is there a motion? Councilwoman Herbie?
Yes, I move adoption of Resolution Number Eleven dash two thousand sixteen.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we adopt Resolution Number Eleven dash two thousand sixteen. Is there a discussion? Councilwoman Herbie?
Yes. We have some obsolete property that we need to declare a surplus and dispose of, and we usually do that by a formal resolution. In this case, these are items from the Fire Department that don't have any value to the city, and because of their age, probably would not be of any value to comparable fire departments. But we will first try to offer them to a place like Camp Safety Equipment. That's a firm that specializes in resale to fire, of fire-related equipment. If they have no interest in them, then we would see if we could recycle them. If these are not able to be recycled, then we would probably just dispose of them in the trash. We also have about fifty-nine unclaimed bicycles that we need to clear out. Our plan is to provide four of them to the Kiwanis for their annual safety fair at Kemper Heights on May twentieth and donate the rest to Goodwill. So I would urge adoption of this resolution.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Would the clerk please call the roll on Resolution Eleven, two thousand sixteen?
Cottle?
No.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Southall?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
The resolution passed six, six to one. Next item on the agenda would be item H, a motion. Councilwoman Holt?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to accept the resignation of Cheryl Long from the Beautification Commission for a term expiring eleven thirty, twenty eighteen.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we accept the resignation of Ms. Cheryl Long from the Beautification Commission for the term that would have expired eleven thirty eighteen. Is there any discussion?
No.
I just have one question.
Mr. Burns?
How many positions were open?
Three.
Three. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion to accept the resignation, let it be known by the sign of voting aye?
Aye.
Posed. The motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda, item I, motion for General Fund, Councilwoman Herbie?
Yes, I would move to receive the General Fund Summer Report as contained in the departmental reports.
It's been moved in second that we receive the General Fund Summer Report as contained in the departmental reports. Any discussion?
No.
Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, let it be known by the sign of voting aye?
Aye.
Posed. Motion passes unanimously. Is there any further business to come before the body? Any further business to come before the body? Hearing none. Meeting is adjourned.